Arrived on Monday, May 13, 2013. South Bend County Council is now in session. The invocation by Vice President Oliver Davis.
Senator Davis, good morning. We thank you so much for being here tonight. We ask you to give us wisdom as we make decisions for the city of South Bend. We also pray for the family and of John Spicari. We thank you for the service that you give to the city of South Bend. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
The Lord is to the life of the United States of America. And he is the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, in the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, John Gordy. Okay, reading of the land. Mr. Scott, present. Mr. Henry Davis. Mrs. Shea.
Scott.
Dr. Frelick.
Yes.
Dr. Varner, present. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Mr. Frelick.
Yes.
President Dieter.
Present.
Eight reporting present. All right, thank you. We have the report on the Subcommittee on Minutes. That be it. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April 27, 2013, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Eric Dieter, David Varner. Thank you very much.
I'm moved that we accept the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Second, the motion is second in all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you. Under special business, we would like to make the announcement that the next council meeting will be Wednesday, 5/29, 13. 5/29 instead of our normal, which is Memorial Day, County Council the next day, will be Wednesday, May 29. Special announcement representing the city administration is Captain Roos, the Deputy Chief of Staff. And you, Mike Schmuller, would like to introduce the corporate counsel tonight?
Thank you very much, President Dieter. I'd like to introduce to all council members and council attorney and Clerk Gordy, Crystal Briscoe, who is our new incorporation counsel from the city of South Bend. And Crystal comes to the city from Barnes and Thornburg, where she was an associate. She went to Doc Porezo for graduate school, Notre Dame for law school. And we're excited to have her as part of the city team.
All right, thank you. Clerk Gordy, let's go to 1335, please. 1335 is a revolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, honoring all police officers killed in the line of duty and declaring the week of May 12 through May 18, 2013, as Police Officers Memorial Week in South Bend, Indiana. All right, thank you. We have FOP president. And this is Chief here tonight?
I don't know if he's, I gotta be able to make it up.
All right, Ron Glaugham, would you like to step up with our FOP president? Thank you.
Council President, President Dieter, council members on behalf of FOP 36, I want to say it's my honor to be here tonight in front of you, to accept this proclamation and tell you thank you.
Thank you, Dan Demler, 71 was sample. Mr. Frelick, go right ahead. No, he can speak later.
Resident leader of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, honoring all police officers killed in the line of duty and declaring the week of May 12 through May 18, 2013, as Police Officers Memorial Week in South Bend, Indiana. Whereas the South Bend Common Council recognizes the last National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, DC, as the nation's monument for federal, state, and local enforcement of officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty while serving in protecting their communities as sworn officer. And whereas the Common Council fully recognizes that on Friday, May 10, 2012, at 7:30 PM, the Paternal Order of Police Lives Number 36 held their annual tribute memorial service to honor the 15 South Bend Police Department officers who gave their lives in the line of duty while protecting the city. Therefore, on behalf of the very grateful South Bend community, the Common Council wishes to honor each of these very special police officers. Hans Braun, Fred Beulen, Oscar Christensen, Samuel Cooper, Paul DeGage, Charles Farke Sr., Thomas DeRue Sr., Ronald Say Tremaine Sr., Louis Keller, Neil McIntyre, Nick Palazzato, Scott Lee Severance, Delbert Thompson, Lloyd Thompson, Howard Wagner. The Common Council rededicates itself to any each of the 15 fallen officers who are among the 20,000 law enforcement officers in America who have given their lives in the line of duty since 1791, with the name of each officer being engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial depicted above, as well as the monument at the South Bend Police Department ward. Now therefore, due to resolve, the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the South Bend Common Council recognizes approximately 900,000 law enforcement are currently serving across America and that in 2012, 119 officers made the ultimate sacrifice. On behalf of all the citizens of the city of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council hereby publicly commemorates and gratefully honors each and every one of the police officers, and in particular, the 15 fallen members of the South Bend Police Department who died while serving and protecting the residents of South Bend, Indiana. The Common Council hereby declares, May 12 through May 18, as Police Officers Memorial Week in South Bend, Indiana, which will coincide with the National Police Week being celebrated across our great nation. The Common Council urges all citizens to remember and thank our dedicated police officers who are serving today as part of the thin blue line standing between the lawful and the lawless. The council notes that all American flags are to be flown at past staff on May 15 in honor of all fallen officers, their family, and friends throughout the United States. Resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council, by the Common Council, and approved by the mayor.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? No opposition counsel?
Will without this unanimous vote?
Thank you.
All right, in all favor.
Aye.
No opposition.
You don't see one?
Oh, I don't. Mr. Glaugham, would you like to speak?
No.
It is passed. Thank you, Clerk Gordy. Let's go to 1331, please.
1331, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recognizing the many positive outreach programs of Models Against Violence on the 10th year, on their 10th anniversary.
Thank you. Councilman Henry Davis, Jr.
Thank you. Will the members of Models Against Violence please come stand with me and poll you? Just wanted to speak to our colleagues and public, members of the public, to honor and recognize an organization that has lost a lot and that is in the community that is trying to provide support as well as future outlooks on how we deal with issues that relate to violence, youth violence, in many cases as well. Whereas the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, acknowledges that in 2003, Molly Woods founded Models Against Violence in South Bend after her own son was lost in the tense midst of active violence in downtown South Bend. And whereas today, Models Against Violence continues to dedicate itself to their core beliefs that concern for one another and concern for our community will help turn pain into compassion. Thanks for hard work and the dedication of Ruth Reese, Bobby Woods, and many others. And whereas some of the many positive outreach programs and events which Models Against Violence has provided include hosting a radio outreach program entitled, "Getting Through the Holidays," which offers prayer, encouragement, and support; Models Against Violence Annual Community Walk, and Remembrance Celebration, where people gather to remember those lost, too soon to violence, and where persons are encouraged to wear red to represent. In quotations, "the love that's going to be spread." Post discussion groups and film screens such as the one held at Lincoln Center when American Blackout was shown. Sponsors, grief workshops, hosts, workshops for schoolchildren, and participation in the Center for Women Inter-Cultural Leadership Program at Saint Mary's College, just to name a few. And whereas for the past 10 years, Models Against Violence has compassion and work through so many dedicated mothers to empower women to create lasting change in the community by ending the cycle of violence and healing their own grief to those who have lost their sons in the street to violence. And whereas Models Against Violence reaches out to remind individuals that they are not alone and how important it is to curb violence with their general business meetings and grief support group meetings being held the first month of the month in the Coop Fest Cultural Center. Now therefore, that is all by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, on behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council is proud to publicly honor and congratulate all of the members of Models Against Violence as they celebrate their 10th anniversary of providing positive awareness and outreach progress throughout the city. Section 2, the Common Council recognizes that Models Against Violence received the Community Service Award last year from South Bend Community Hall of Fame, and the council believes that the tireless efforts and dedication of the organization is truly commendable. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. Council members, I ask you to vote this in through full affirmation, but also allow the members that are here to speak to you briefly. Thank you.
Absolutely.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Paulie Goresal. I am the president and one of the founders of Models Against Violence. And first of all, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the South Bend County Council. We truly appreciate your acknowledgement of the organization. Our work is still not done. We still work hard in the community, just trying to make a difference. And our belief is that if we could just touch one life or prevent one mother from having to go through the grief, the hurt, and the pain that we've experienced over the last 10 years in our work and all the efforts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the group like to speak? Okay. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? No one in the opposition counsel?
I'd just like to say, as a counselor and as an elder in the church, who has had to deal with many funerals throughout my career, I've told people, you never get over death, you learn to deal with it. And the way you learn to deal with it is by helping other people deal with it. Because those who try to just say, I'm over it, and Mother's Day comes again, you realize that you're not over it. And Christmas time comes again, you're not over it. And birth time comes, graduation time comes, everything else. When you smell different colognes and different pictures, you realize you're never over it. And so, just going down the way, flowers over my mother's grave just two days ago, you just realize death is something that you've never getting used to. And, but the way you can deal with it is by helping other people for our young children and our young boys and our girls hopefully will not have to have their lives ended too soon and that they can live full lives. So I applaud your efforts and I applaud you as you helped other people walk through the valley of the shadow of death.
Thank you.
Congratulations?
So therefore, I'm moved that we accepted that affirmation.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Before we go to Report of City Houses, we'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop 422. Is that just you? You're a pretty old boy scout. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, Report of City Houses, first of all, before we just carry it over to Chuck, Mike Schmuller is going to give us an update regarding some questions that council had. And this will be a five-minute presentation and then we'll entertain questions from council members that are still.
Sounds good. Thank you, Council President. My name is Mike Schmull, Chief of Staff to the Mayor, offices in the 14th floor of this building. A lot of my update was included in the letter that was sent to council on May 2nd of this month. But I'm happy to give an overview of that letter and also give a few just quick updates to that as well this evening. A lot of this started with the 1,000 houses and 1,000 days benchmark or goal that the mayor and the task force put out in late February. And due to our communications efforts in setting that benchmark, IDEM, which is the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, the state agency that enforces EPA and environmental regulations at the federal and state level, contacted the city and essentially, they said that they believe that that benchmark constitutes a plan, what I quote, a plan. Now, in previous practice in the city, we were inspecting homes and abating homes for asbestos only if those homes were in close proximity to one another, meaning if the homes were in a row and they were literally next door to one another. And so, we were moving forward in that fashion to demolish homes in a scattered fashion throughout the city to address the homes that were in dire need to come down. The infestation, crime, you know, scrampers have gone in and taken everything of value. They were just beyond repair. The fire department was responding to calls for fire, arson on those properties. And so, we were moving through in a scattered fashion throughout the city to address this problem. The two major issues to note in talking with IDEM moving forward is inspection and abatement. An inspection is actually going into a house to inspect for asbestos. And that's something that we are going to start doing in-house. That's something where we'll pay for, of course, for our inspectors to go in and inspect for asbestos. And a lot of it depends on how old the home is and the materials that were used to build that home. For example, many homes that were built maybe 75, 100 years ago do not have asbestos. Homes that are maybe 35 to 50 years old may have asbestos. And so, that's something that we're going to pay for upfront. We'll save money in the long run to have those inspectors working in-house. When it comes to abatement, it's a little trickier. Abatement is essentially the process of, once you've found the asbestos, going in and securing those and removing those from the home in a very safe and responsible way. The process, I'm not a scientist or a doctor, but it involves watering down the asbestos, wrapping it in plastic, and then taking it to a certified landfill. And so, the costs with that program, the full costs are to be determined. But what I can tell you is, in the future, all of our bids are going to have a requisite in there for the contractor to conduct this kind of work, especially on the abatement end. Because we do want to comply with everything that IDEM has told us moving forward. I know Councilwoman Shea had a question earlier in the afternoon from the committee session as it relates to certified contractors and local contractors. In the materials that I sent to council members on May 2nd, there were three additional attachments from IDEM. I believe one of those lists has the certified list of inspectors in our area in the Midwest. And then the other is a list of certified contractors that can conduct this kind of work. And we would certainly want to comply with all laws moving forward. The first 50 homes that went up to bid will need to be resubmitted because of the inspection and abatement issue. So those will go back out to bid and they'll get the requirement of the contractor to then reply to us and say, you know, we've found asbestos in these homes, we haven't found them in these homes. Here's how it's going to change the bid package that we sent out. So once we have that completed, I think we'll have a really good sense of the overall cost over time. And that should be coming up here in a few weeks. Sugar DeConley, the Director of Code Enforcement, could have further details on that. And I'll just say, oh, one last little thing before I get to my final comments. There's 46 homes now. I put that in the letter. That's because four homes, they've been able to work with the legal department to do repairs on the homes. So they signed a contract with the legal department that they'd like to do the repairs on the homes, rehab the homes. And this is often a thing that we do with folks if they have the upfront capital or the wherewithal to fix a home, bring it up to code, and make it livable again. So the number went down from 50 to 46. That's the difference there. And just in closing, I'll say throughout this process, our communication with IDEM has been positive. They appreciate our responsiveness as it relates to this issue. We're compliant with all state and federal regulations. And everybody can be rest assured that in the future, as it relates to inspection and abatement of asbestos, but we're doing it in an environmentally friendly and safe manner. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And this is one of those things where the council brought us to your attention, I believe, when we were looking at that, correct? Some council members originally. So again, triggering, there is a working relationship between the council and the mayor's office sometimes. And this is one of the instances where all that information flow works. So thanks to everybody on the council for getting into that. Thanks for the demonstrations and looking at that.
And I think also, Council President, that moving forward, as we talk about going to the table with budget discussions and negotiations later this summer, that this is going to be a key thing. That we'll have to talk about the inspection and abatement costs and how we can continue to move toward this benchmark to help our neighborhoods.
Right, thank you. Councilmember White?
Yeah, we'd like to take the administration and council for really addressing this issue. Because from my perspective, I saw it as a public safety issue. We want to make sure that not only the citizens concerned, but also the inspectors and individuals and contractors who would be looking at the issue of making better homes. Do you have a timeframe in regards to the 46 homes that we have to go back and re-adapt and re-hear? What does that look like in time?
I know it'll be soon. I know it'll be soon. And I'll get an update from Sugar DeConley on that.
But the point that is re-adapt to the point that the bids have been committed and approved, how sensitive would that make, 30 to 60 days or?
I would say 60 days, closer to the 60-day end on the public bidding process.
But that also includes some type of cost analysis? Because we know that to train the inspectors to go to the class, that's the cost that is associated with that.
Yep.
And then the cost that will be associated with if and when any type of investigation is found.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, and then in my letter, I believe the course cost, according to Director Conley, was about $5,000 for the course. I don't know if it's, I think it could be for a couple inspectors. And then the abatement cost is the one that I think will be a little bit, it will be higher. And that's just to be determined. I'll sum that along.
Thank you.
Senator Davis?
Well, thank you. Chief Inspector, could you clarify, can you sum it all with the $5,000 per person?
Yes, I will.
And the role of the inspectors? While they're doing that work, could you clarify, would that take away from any of the other work that they already been assigned to do? And how would that be covered from their current work that they're doing from that standpoint?
Sure.
I personally want to thank you for the work that you all have done with that, as I shared with you today. And I've said before, sometimes people think that we deal with the red tape up here, but it's orange. It's right here, orange. And in that, it's a control of the council as to sometimes these matter. You can use orange tape when we have construction. And that doesn't mean that we're going to stop it.
I know.
It just means that we gotta slow down and look at it and make sure everything's done. And that's why we have orange, orange tape. That's it. Okay? And that's where I look at it, I believe, and we can work together to move forward. And that's, there's been a public safety issue for us here. And because I'm glad to see several of their homes, you mentioned one home earlier across the street from me on, yeah. My neighbors would be glad to see that one come down. And so, but we just remind each other that everything is done right. And that's been the key thing that we have been working with this whole bunch. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shea.
Sure. Well, Mike, thank you for your presentation. And the question I'd asked in committee earlier actually had to do with this issue, but specifically to a bill that we'll be discussing tonight. And Joe 1413 is a bill that Councilman Davis has brought before council. And we have some amendments that we're considering tonight. And my question earlier had to do with one of the amendments which talks about before a home is scheduled for demolition, the city should require three estimates for rehab, repair from local neighborhood contractors. Do you know in your research and discussions with IDEM, when we identify homes for demolition or repair, it is determined that asbestos is in the property on the home, do the contractors that do the work on that property have to be certified?
Licensed.
With asbestos?
It's my understanding they do. Yeah, they need to be licensed with the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
So even for the remodeling work?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, any other further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you have the building commissioner. We'll have a five-minute opening statement and then we will take questions from the council. We will go no longer than 15 minutes.
Thank you, President Dieter. Council members, good evening. Chuck Yewo, building commissioner, offices at 125 South Lafayette, South Bend. The Parleis Building Code was developed in the Babylonian Empire in 2000 B.C. And is attributed to King Hammurabi. The law provided that if a builder built a house for a man and completed it, that man shall pay him two shekels of silver per sar, which is approximately 12 square feet of house, as his wage. If a builder has built a house for a man and his work is not strong, and if the house he built falls in and kills the householder, that builder shall be slain. If the child of the householder should be killed, the child of that builder shall be slain. If goods have been destroyed and because the house was not made strong and it has fallen in, he shall restore the fallen house out of his own material. If a builder has built a house for a man and his work is not done properly and the wall shifts, then that builder shall make that wall good with his own silver. Building codes have changed a bit in 4,000 years. And although we very seldom kill anyone for improper work, the building department's reason for being is to ensure that we live and work in safe, comfortable, and durable structures. To that end, in 2012, we processed 128 variances and 31 special exceptions, special uses. We registered 906 contractors. We traveled 86,710 miles in order to conduct 13,667 inspections. We had 271 plan reviews, 59 design reviews, and 18 near the northeast design totally district reviews. We investigated 160 zoning violations. We investigated one hundred and sixty zoning violations, resolving one hundred and forty-one of them. We processed over two hundred and ten million dollars' worth of improvements in the jurisdiction, taking in nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of revenue. So, what's new for two thousand thirteen? On May twentieth, the building department began a five-step master plan to help modernize the building inspection process in South Bend. This is the start of a long-held vision for the building department of the future, an ultra-efficient, consumer-friendly, totally paperless office. Step one, archive all commercial plans submitted over the past three years into electronic format. Step two, beta-test iPads for configuration of operations in field and standardized practices. Step three, issue iPads to all inspectors and train for that entry of inspections. Step four, electronically archive all other parcel-related folders for cross-linking information. Step five, create electronic folders for every parcel in the county. Eventually, each inspector will have field access to a complete history of each parcel in Saint Joseph County, a complete set of code books, a listing of standardized inspection checklists, an electronic notepad, a built-in camera, and a notebook of illustrations to help explain frequently asked questions. How cool is that? I'd hope to bring you this information earlier, but my hands were tied, we had to wait for technology to catch up with our vision. Having said that, you are the first to officially hear about the implementation of building department's inspection process of the future. When you have a chance to see it in action, you may very well have ideas about adapting and applying it on other areas of interest. Please feel free to contact me at any time for personal demonstration. It will be my pleasure to share this dream with you.
All right, thank you. The council members will start with Mr. Scott and go down.
Thanks, Chuck. And I hope you decide to file all your information with the clerk's office and the council electronically, so we can all enjoy it. On the legal fines, how many fines have you guys collected in the past year?
In actual fines?
Yeah.
I don't believe we've collected any.
In the previous year.
I don't believe we've collected any.
You got the chills?
Um, so, all you have for now?
Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you, Chuck. No questions.
Could you email that presentation? I thought the statistics you had were wonderful, so I'd like to load those.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
It's an honor, please. Thank you. Chuck, thank you for your presentation, it's another history of the Babylonian day. Also, I look forward to working with you when it comes down to our soy and water table issues that we've been working with. We'll definitely submit our questions to our attorneys, Kathy Saccases, so she can work along with our new attorney, Attorney Briscoe. On this matter, I'm glad to realize that communication is all wide open as we speak, because there's something, your recommendations along with that, as you know, while the challenges that we all have faced over near the New Energy Plant and the report that we heard to make, we're going to go along with plans and everything else that we can put into the plant place this year, I think it's going to be something good. And could you just make a brief statement regarding that whole situation about your vision of how we'd like to see it moving forward?
Are you talking about the water? New water?
Yes. Could you just put a line in?
Yeah. I believe that the cause of the problem out there is underground water rather than above-ground water. Even though we have floodplain ordinance in place, and that, as I see now, or currently, is part of the requirement, or at least the same guidelines are used as are already used in floodplain ordinance, I think that we're already considering those influences. I think we need to focus more on the subterranean occurrence and how to best rectify that so that we can immediately remedy the problem and in the future, keep the same problem from occurring elsewhere. Now, I know we have a lot of wells out there, active wells, so this is one of the things that I have to speak with Mr. Horvath about in terms of what do we do if one of those wells is turned off suddenly?
In terms of flooding throughout the city?
Yeah, throughout the city. A lot of wells out there, still active. You know, they're all, I believe electronically, use electronic pumps, and something that crossed my mind is what happens at a, or during a severe sunstorm? And back, I think about a hundred years ago, there was a sunstorm so severe that telegraph lines actually caught on fire, and everything, the entire U.S. was shut down for several weeks because no electric motors would run, nothing electronic would operate, we had to rebuild. So, that's something, that's a scenario that I don't think anybody's really considered, but it's one that, the sun is very active right now, and solar flares are a natural occurrence, and it's hard to predict. We'd have some warning, but if one big enough, Congress, it would affect electrical grids, anything electronic would essentially thrive.
The director showed us a list of where he put the wells over there near New Energy. Do we have a master list of where all the wells are in the city at this present time? And at least those from the council, are those in the public boards, committee have a list of all those? I mean, so you can talk about what potential situations could possibly occur?
Yes, and I saw a map with Mr. Horvath today, and he has a mapping of all of the major wells, as well as. And I thought that he gave you a copy of that today.
No, he gave us what the New Energy, I'm talking about the one by City. You were just referring to the?
Oh, yeah, that was a map I took a look at. I'll have to find out which one that is.
It is being updated.
Oh, it is being updated?
Yeah, there were some omissions, I mess for a copy of the corporation council, our dinner room, city attorney, and myself talked about that last Friday, and G I S.
Cool. Yeah, but these are things that, one of the things I also want to do is set aside some time with Mr. Horvath and go over what he's looking to do, what I'm looking to do, and see if we can, you know, get some kind of common plan together that's going to work for both of us, because we don't want to be at odds in what our goals are, and make sure that that fits with what the neighborhood needs are and what the future needs are of the community.
That fits, because oftentimes, people don't think about South Bend being a water city, they think about New Orleans and other places like that, I've got a good coast, but with our river here, and with the city of Kaptici and everything else, we truly are, I mean, we will sound to that with South Bend and entire river, and we are water too, so I understand that, with the building, but it's something very key for us. Thank you.
Ever further?
No, thank you. I'm excited about those topics and meetings.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to move forward to the technicality to adhere on the master plan and to make sure that we're all in common.
Yes, absolutely. That was one of the reasons I wanted to do it, was because of my frustration with trying to gather information that I needed from various entities, not being able to do it for a variety of reasons. I wanted to at least get what I have working and on record accessible to everyone who has been, so that's the effort that's behind it.
Thank you. Councilman White, the monthly reports, which are very good, are we able to, Mark Neil, we able to get his monthly reports and also put that on the city website, because I think that'd be interesting for the public?
The monthly reports, do you provide?
And in addition to the building, the new building starts and all the things, are we able to do that? Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. And again, thank you for the presentation, information was very good, and you should know from your study of the Babylonian, back in the day, that the reason that building commissioners were very important at that time is they would take the hairs of the building commissioners so they're walking in the streets, and that markets, they would be easily identified. Thank you very much. That's our report, thank you. I have a report that results from the committee of the home. Senator, the tenth call of favor.
I'd like to permission of the council president to remain seated at this time, since we only have one bill as before. At this time, the whole time session, this portion of the council meeting, where bill was given a second reading in a public hearing. This is a whole portion, the proposed ordinance, and sort of some staff members, area of the plan would be given. In all other situations, the former presentation on the proposed ordinance will need to follow the committee's reports. At this time, I would like to maintain a motion regarding the on-leveraged dashboard.
I'd like to make a motion to continue, line thirteen to six ten, second.
If the group has taken it, are there any questions or concerns, seeing all those in favor of the motion I hear you vote? Aye, those opposed, the motion carries. At this time, Mr. Board, would you please give second reading to bill fourteen dash thirteen, please?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter six, article eight, of the South Bend municipal code by the addition of new section six dash thirty-seven point two, addressing accountability and government actions on buildings declared vacant or abandoned.
Make a motion to accept the substitute version, second.
There are three scripters errors, I assume that those are correct.
Do you want to know?
You read those, item on page two, paragraph E two, and should be all vacant, and item four should be contractors as the last four.
So, no, are there any other corrections and or additions? If not, I leave the motion as being accepted. The substitute versions with the scripture, items at all those in favor of the motion I hear you vote?
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. At this time, your committee report.
Yes, Madam Chair. The public works have brought me vacation this afternoon, and we discussed bill fourteen thirteen, and we bring this bill to the full council with no recommendation at this time.
Thank you. Do we have a presenter?
Yes, we do. Chuck, we took like a three-minute recess to set this PowerPoint up, please.
It's been a request, I have no problems with the council members, it was your pleasure.
The group has taken it, all those in favor of the motion I hear you vote?
Those opposed, the motion carries. We'll have a three-minute recess, so that's presenter and set up the PowerPoint.
Here we go.
Three estimates. Somebody else can say three estimates. No, there's way too many for me. This is a thing.
Unfortunately, the council, we do have copies of the PowerPoint, and the members of the audience who do not.
Okay, I guess if I talk at a moderate pace, perfectly it will come up. Council members, colleagues, as is standing before you today with this bill fourteen thirteen, as well as members from the public, what I have to ask, fourteen thirteen, offices in the ordinance for a bill right now are trying to shape a better way of doing business here in South Bend, Indiana. This particular bill that's before you is asking for certain restrictions and requirements, but for the most part, it's a bill to enhance the services of the city of South Bend. As it stands, there's a number of things that we have to do, that we have to engage ourselves in to get the total package of information as it relates to what houses are going to be demolished, why it's going to be demolished, and so on. As I've talked before in the past, and I keep on recognizing this point and keep talking about it, development cannot be an afterthought, and as development becomes an afterthought to what we do as far as demolition, we will be decreasing our chances as a city to expand our capacity or to even maintain what we have to bring new people into this area. As we've been talking about, and we have said in the past, setbacks for the arts in the city of South Bend has changed, and it's been like requirement throughout the whole time in the state of Indiana. And so, we went to Mars in a home, the thought of putting a home back in that vacant lot, for the most part, can't happen per state law. For the most part, the whole time, public population really don't understand that. And so, we have to be very conscious and also intentional when we're talking about the lifeline of the city. Earlier we were having some budgetary conversations, and the question came up about the tax breakdown and how the tax breakdown affects this local municipalities. As we're only getting forty cents on the dollar for each dollar spent for taxes, I would like to remind you, the way that this particular body, this city of South Bend operates, is solely off of, and not all the way off of, its tax dollars, property tax dollars. So, if we can continue to decrease our inheritance or the possibility of inheritance from the taxpayer, clearly the services that we are so used to receiving, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, they will all cease to exist as we continue to go out. So, I'm asking the pleasure of support and thinking about this outside of the box and not necessarily in the same land that we have dealt with these matters in the past. We just have to really change the thought pattern that we have, our attitude, and just what we want to see in the city. As you see some of the neighborhoods decreased, and looking at the situation in Southern Community School Corporation, where you only have nineteen thousand students in Southern Community Corporation, the thought now probably will be later on is how do they shake their budget to make sure that they're getting the biggest bang for their buck. Not entirely, I can't let people do that, it's called decreasing staff, which is jobs, and then it's called decreasing the amount of schools in a given area. So, you're starting to talk about school closures. So, this problem just doesn't exist as a housing issue, it's a city of South Bend issue, it's a lifeline issue. And so, while we're trying to set the standard and also the status of what South Bend can be, should be, and would be, we want to be, again, intentional on how we look at these matters and look at it not only in a five-day period or a forty-year period, but even beyond that as a ten-to-fifteen-to-twenty-year period. I'm not suggesting by no means that we stop demolition on homes that need to be demolished. I am clear that many homes need to be demolished. My issue is that, once we demolish those homes, what is the next step? It's not always the thought or good faith that we're going to expect a homeowner, Jason homeowner to pick up that particular lot, doesn't happen all the time, and who wants to pay more taxes, and who wants to mow more grass? So, we have to be thoughtful about what we're going and how we're going to get there. A community garden only exists for us for four months out of the year, that's it. A community playground, just depends on how many kids you have. So, let's just be thoughtful and a little bit more intentional, again, like I said earlier about this particular matter. Before you read the statement of purposes, I hope you all have read the statement of purposes, and thank you guys for putting that together for me. You realize that this has not been an issue that just started here in South Bend, Indiana. South Bend has been dealing with vacant abandoned housing for the last, you know, decade or so, but it has been more of an issue that's been born over the last past twenty years. So, in not reading the first page, we want to go to the next page where we have the amendments. Last council meeting, I think that this was kind of started after vote for this particular piece of legislature. And what I'm asking for is that we look at this with an open mind and make sure that we are doing what is best for the city and as well as residents in the city that actually pays the tax dollars, and make sure that we are doing the job necessary to bring up the property. According to the minister, with this, again, I'm going to make that to E, section six dash thirty-seven point two, and we're going to go out to E where the amendments were added in that, and it asks for additional requirements. Number one, demolition mirrors zoning process. When you look at zoning, new zoning, you'll see usually, most of the time, all the time, you'll see a yellow sign stating out what the hearing date of public notice. Residents around the area get to see it, driving paths, and they also are notified by other means. Number two, the city should publish a complete list of all vacant abandoned housing with owner's names, should be required, so that the current council person or any other such person, department heads, city officers, to find out this information. As you are looking to post new things on the website... As you are looking to post new things on the website, some of these things because of the grabio should be also posted as well as public information. Number three, vacant abandoned homes should be secured at high level to prevent usage and further deterioration until a housing plan is enacted. Think it's a great idea. Again, development cannot be an afterthought. We had a presentation earlier from a gentleman who obviously is a salesman, I'm aware of that. However, when we get into bidding and purchasing, those things need to be talked about, and obviously, this is something that's worked, and it's working in eight other different countries, and also in the regional areas such as Chicago, which I'm sure has larger problems than the City of South Bend because it's a larger metropolitan area. Number four, before we go home and schedule for demolition, the city should require that three estimates for rehab repair from local neighborhood contractors. The whole purpose of that is to be able to gain more of a job outlook, job market, local economy rebuilding itself. If we had the ability to employ people based upon their skills, what they are able to do with homes, then the better off we are in making sure that that money is returned back to them and back also to the neighborhood, because nine out of ten, if you live in a certain area, that's where you're going to spend your money at. So, it will help regenerate some energy. Now, is this a total solution for the whole problem? Absolutely not. However, as you step forward, you know, in the right directions as I see it. The proper sort of case, we're just going to talk about that. Yes, if you're a general contractor and you're bidding on some work, obviously, you have to have a certification in hand and on hand. The thought of this also is to help employ our MBE and WBE program that we are sorely, sorely, sorely to be some way inside of. Is it becoming upon us when we put legislation out there to employ a certain demographic of folks, that we make sure that there is a lane that is established and that lane is being fulfilled by the promises that are set forth by the city council of South Bend and even any city government as well? So, there is a really, really great opportunity to employ people, mind charity, but also with their skills to do a certain job. We also have a thought process of also how we can work with local labor unions. Spoke with them, and they are willing to participate as well and use some of their apprentice to take care of some of these things, and it's a powerful opportunity to see some of the things I'm really talking about. As it stands before you, obviously, we're going to go to PowerPoint, but please, with open mind. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, little bit faster now. A positive restoration, thank you guys, we're looking at page one. Number one, amendments to bill fourteen thirteen, obviously, we just got to talk about those, I just explained those in great detail. The agenda, vacant and abandoned properties fourteen thirteen, obviously, a positive opportunity. We want to get this as an optimistic outlook on what we have in our city. It allows us to collaborate, the presentation earlier from the security of the APs, the benefit to our city and part successes. We want to allow this problem to become a future solution. Local organizations are going to give us a helping story, rebuild the community, promote home ownership, the programs of local banks, sustain these tax base, using a greener approach, giving unemployed, unskilled laborers a chance to become gangly employee, and also be given an example of how a community can be rebuilt. We're going to skip over this one. Whoa, no, we're going to stay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, number one, options, local contractors voted from South Bend, what economy area, using apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs, labor unions, to help rehab, restore, or even demolish existing homes. Program will potentially stabilize the housing market, maintain tax base, promote home ownership, upgrades, and job training. They'll produce skilled laborers, we'll be able to use those folks that are coming out of prison, ex-offenders, and some of these programs as well. Applying the MBE concept, correct, will give the minority friends an opportunity to develop and work for it. Number two, the bad value of survey was concluded with one hundred women in South Bend, and those hundred women, one hundred percent of those women currently have or are receiving some type of building assistance. Sixty-five percent of those women have been to prison, seventy-five percent of those women have been treated at a shelter or a treatment center more than once in their life. Nine percent of those women have not received any form of training or skill trade. The survey was conducted as a necessary measure of what our community is producing. We are able to change by giving them options. Two costs of vacant properties. In two thousand and ten, studied by the U.S. Fire Administration revealed a possibly twenty thousand fires occur annually in vacant residential properties. Thirty percent of these fires are set intentionally, fifty percent of these fires spread throughout the entire residential property, ninety-nine percent of these fires are confined, eleven percent spread to adjacent buildings. There are more fires in vacant buildings secured by fire, according to two thousand and ten FIBA report. Copper theft, number two. Copper theft known as urban mining. There's growing problem in U.S. vacant properties. According nationwide, one of the fastest-growing fires in U.S. nine states is metal theft. And a hundred thousand worth of scrap and stove and copper may cost up to a hundred thousand dollars in repairs. The U.S. Department of Energy report that the death of copper wild loan costs America one billion dollars per year. Thus, the conversation about how we secure these actual homes. Where's the cost of South Bend, given fire and copper theft? A vacant property secured with wood is broken into every three to six months, looking at average repair costing from the average of five thousand to eleven thousand dollars for under damage inflicted. A vacant and unsecured property tagged for demolition costs a county government thirteen thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars. An individual vacant and unsecured property costs a county government five thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars annually. Teenagers die in a fall at a vacant, raised, raised, and moved hospital, residents shot by, excuse me, let me take a walk.
Can't be.
Excuse me. Teenagers die in a fall at a vacant hospital in the Illinois area, shopping out, but not supplies. Cost of securing vacant properties in South Bend, Indiana, in two thousand and eleven was one hundred and seven thousand dollars, and in two thousand and twelve was eighty-four thousand dollars. However, there is another option, and that's where you got the report from the gentleman from VBS. So, we're going to skip over a couple of slides. At the end of the day, all of this, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're minimizing our risk, but also trying to regenerate some of the funds that we have used in the past to help employ people, but also to help restore our neighborhoods. Let's go to the benefits, we got a couple more slides. The benefits, we do not usually maintain the existing tax base, promote community growth, it will steadily, setting areas with the foundation in place encourages home ownership, provide a vision or a border plate or other areas in the city. Stimulates the future of sustainability. Community redevelopment, Indianapolis, Indiana. Indianapolis, Indiana, went through a mixed income revocation effort called Fall Creek Development. Using senior homes and local energy rehab homes below a five-block radius. The program gave interest into a downtown area of Indianapolis, a welcome to people, but also produces strong home ownership in a once underdeveloped area in the city. And as you see, you can look at a fall creek dot com, I'm sorry. Auburn, New York, another nanotech site. Examples in places such as Auburn, New York, are showing that we can rebuild neighborhoods with a different approach of two housing. Seven years ago, the current owner of Auburn, New York, took more life back into communities by replacing residents in substantial housing projects by placing them back into vacant and abandoned homes. The city used the stabilization dollars and loan dollars to secure the housing for rehab and for also for rent, compared with two our market because of nano link. Evidence on the noise. Use NST dollars, Neighborhood Specialization Program dollars to rehab homes in areas of CD or now popular. We have the Triple Inn, and we also have Heritage Foundation as well, that has supported us in these areas. The program mapped out complete areas for restoration and allowed the use of local labor and contractors to restore neighborhoods they have fallen and were spared. Now, these areas are marked throughout the city as the best places to live. Indianapolis, Indiana, is Fall Creek again.
Some people live at.
Keep going.
CDC is the plan, community investment plan.
Thank you, thank you. As you see before me, these homes resemble some of the things that we've seen throughout the city in certain areas, the Triple Inn area, as well as some other areas within this city. So, we want to be able to look at what the possibilities can be and should be for the City of South Bend, and also the kids that grow up in these areas. Government assistance, we have the ability to do beyond grants, different things that potentially could help us out. We also have an opportunity to look at a tax abatement code and see some things that we can switch in, switch out, that will potentially inspire people to start remodeling homes, provide they do extra mile dollar work, but also give them that two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year tax abatement as a requirement of their work there's on their KPA DC, it's a council working with the public to provide partners to create funding that supports new development in key part neighborhood. That's it, Indianapolis folks. These special initiatives may be available for your commercial development. To find out more about this, I would say the contact information down there. Last slide, future outlook, rebuilding communities can begin conversation about entrepreneurship programs. With an unemployment rate higher than the national average, getting people to use their skills to service the community through their entrepreneurship can be vital point of growth in a tax per community. The city can match dollars with area financial institutions to fund a grant or loan program to accommodate the new growth in these given areas. The growth we will have is a man of new services such as grocery stores, dry tools, car washes, candy stores, et cetera, and unless there's limit to this, and to create the opportunity for the residents of South Bend. So, this is not only trying to, obviously, get people to buy in, the administration to buy in to how we vet what houses are really the house and why they're going to be demolished, but also gives us another opportunity to step into another conversation about how we re-energize, restore, rebuild our community. Obviously, this was a larger conversation. I'm going to submit this right here for the after me of conversation as well, presentation. And council members, please, if you're willing, let's vote fourteen thirteen in.
At this time, I'm going to ask council members if you have any questions of the presenter. Council members, you have any questions of the presenter? Council chair?
I'm reviewing the bill, and, Henry, I appreciate the spirit. I'm getting.
I can't, you know what, I can't even hear.
I'm sorry. So, I was supportive of the bill before the amendments. I have some concerns with the amendments. Actually, I'm more of a statement, I don't have any questions at this time.
Council members, you have any questions of the presenter? If not, we're going to public here unfortunately. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of such a free deal, fourteen dash thirteen? If so, we have to adjourn to the podium at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this deal, please come to the podium. We do ask that the state should name an address for the record, please.
President Ray Brown, twelve thirty-eight Diamond. I'm in support of the bill because if we tear down everything, then we don't have anything. I've been living in the house on Diamond for forty-nine years. I went down by Miesel School, Mr. Dieter, the father of our neighbor, we seen a lot of stuff coming, but I haven't been Mr. Dieter's. We got a new school, Miesel School there, but right across the street from me, we got several houses that could be rehabbed. We have some houses that need to be tore down, they're torn down. I think that coming together in this presentation, it puts back, because as a kid, when I was growing up, I rehabbed and I worked, and to go back and see the work. Lady St. John and Church, I built that church. Frankie's Barbecue, I built that North Shore Park. So, I know what it takes to get this back to the community, but if we can bring our community together, we got contractors that give me parts all the time, saying we want to get to work. I want to see the work done, but I want the help and the people that's doing the rehab and working, this license and binding to come out of our area.
My name is, is this working?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My name is Glenda Ray Hernandez, I live at seven oh two East South Street, and I do want to speak in favor. I've lived on the southeast side now since nineteen sixty-six, and I've seen all the changes that our neighborhood has gone through, and I think I have some background on what I'm talking about. If we just have code enforcement, which is what demolition is all about, and there aren't any resources, what we have left in the city is neighborhoods with vacant lots. They collect little in taxes, they can become eyesores, and they weaken the neighborhood fabric. There has to be a better plan than just demolishing one thousand houses in one thousand days. I am in agreement that we need to take some time to put together a more comprehensive plan. Now, if the mayor has that, I'm not aware of it, and I don't think the rest of the city is either. So, either it needs to be made plain, or we need time to come up with something. I fear that just demolishing one thousand homes, that by the end of that period of time, we'll be left with a whole lot more that have deteriorated in the meantime, and it will be just another downward spiral. Without some kind of a plan for intervention, I strongly support that we take time, really take time, to work on a comprehensive plan, and try to save just as many of these units as we can, to have the rehab, providing homes for people in need of them, serving more for neighborhood cohesion, and providing jobs, especially if we are going to work with local smaller contractors.
My name is Daniel Heffler, I reside at five thirty-four, I remain in Elgin, Illinois. I'm here in favor of this discussion and in the amendments. I am with VPS, I'm a salesman, but I do what I do because I like to see the communities regenerate themselves. Even if you don't use VPS at the end of this, at least hopefully you can use some of our experience dealing with cities in similar sizes and similar situations going forward. A little bit, just real quick, VPS has been the vacant property specialist for twenty-five years. We're located in eight countries around the world. We have eight service centers around the U.S. and work in forty states currently with contractors, educational facilities.
You've been to the project.
Yes, ma'am.
The public has ordered that before.
Yes, ma'am. In short, in short, we've worked with city councils like yourself that have started going on this road of demolition. In the fifth largest city in Illinois, there was a relationship between the mayor, the city council, a demolition company, and the mayor would drive to work every morning and call his buddy and say, we need to take care of this property, we need it removed, okay? After severing properties, the demolition company had liens on these properties, upward of sixty thousand dollars per property. And what the mayor discovered, it's not his buddy anymore, first of all, because his buddy never got paid, and secondly, the mayor discovered that demolishing these properties prevented revenue opportunities and removed revenue opportunities from the city list, and also presented the city now with a property that had a sixty thousand dollar lien on it, which then Lee would have to remove, and then just presented more problems than rehabbing a lot of those properties we need presenting. So, in short, VPS, like I said, we were brought So, in short, VPS, um, like I said, we were, we were brought out here, um, by Shea Joseph County, uh, for economic development, to discuss some of the solutions that we've seen around the world and in the U.S. And, um, we're trying to bring that professional experience to you guys. So, there again, um, you don't necessarily need to tear down all your properties, you can secure them and rehab them, full of forces. Thank you.
My name is Jose Adelado, I live at twelve twenty-seven, Burke Center Drive, in South Bend, Indiana. I've lived here for twenty-two years, nine months, and fourteen years. This is my hometown. You can't even ask, but, uh, I have a son who's two years, one month, and fifteen days today. Um, this is, this is my hometown in a part of the city. Uh, I want to, I also want to say that I'm a real estate broker at Henne, Indiana, and I'm a real estate investor, and that's here in South, here in the South Bend area, and also in Chicago. And this is how I came across the VPS product that's there. We have VPS product in different properties in Chicago, and they are completely secured. People can come in and out of the property while the properties are, are secured. And this addresses the point in, um, in, um, Henry Davis's amendment on the better security, of better security of the properties. And so I've seen this product in, in action, it's completely, um, affordable, it reduces all kinds of liabilities to the, uh, building owner, to the community. Uh, I know that one of the concerns about the one thousand homes in one thousand days is about, about clearing property for a better future. I think one way of holding the properties, of land banking so to speak, is to keep it the way it is, hold it the way it is. When we find a better use, you can move it along. And that's the, the wonder that the, the product helps us do, instead of tearing it down and then later deciding that we may or may not have a better use for that, for that vacant lot that's now lead-based and, and with lead-based paint, uh, contaminated, bargain site, and then at that point, it's not really a bargain any, any more. Um, the point of the amendment is that it creates a better opportunity for people, neighbors, uh, other taxpayers, and other members of the community to provide meaningful input into what do we do with this community? We understand that there's a lot of changes happening. We all want a better South Bend, and I believe that this amendment can help, help us take a little bit more time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Do you have individuals wishing to speak in court of the substitute bill? If you come to the podium now, make your remarks pertaining to the bill that you bought. If you come to the podium, share your name and address, please. I'm speaking in court.
I'm sorry about that misunderstanding. Okay. Hi, my name is Katie Lee, I recently relocated to, oh, sixteen oh four five Cleveland Road, Granger, Indiana. The reason I moved to Granger is because I am looking for a home in South Bend. The reason I haven't purchased a home in South Bend is because there's no grocery store down here. And, you know, let me get to my point. My point is, um, I relocated here from New York City, where I was a production designer in the film industry for six years. Um, I worked in Detroit, I worked in Boston. Um, the reason I moved to South Bend is because I can have a nice life here. And many people in my field that work, that are from New York, when I bring them here for visits, they always wondered, "Why don't more people live here? Why don't they take, why aren't they advantageous? Why don't they take advantage of what the city has?" I want you all to know you have something here that you're not seeing, and what's happened, what is happening is a huge trend. I know everyone needs something now, we need to be in the black, not in the red, but I want to talk about something that everyone's overlooked, planning. What Henry talked about was, you know, we need a plan, we need to be a pedestrian city, a green city. You look at Chatham Park, that's, that neighborhood. If I'm going to buy a house, I want that to live in that neighborhood, but I want to be able to walk, I work downtown, I want to be able to walk downtown, I want to be able to watch a grocery store, because I hate driving, you know? I'm, those are things that families can't afford. So one of the things I have to go into is the whole idea of demolition and things like this, is what, what is the plan for neighborhoods? We have, we, I see the whole neighborhood is shaped over by water dunes, there's obviously some really good neighborhood planning going there, the houses are going up, they have some plans, and that's what needs to happen. The other thing is, I also worked in, you know, production design, I worked with salvage, uh, salvage yard demo contractors, and I can tell you, a lot of the people that you're going to get to come here and check on these houses, are going to take those materials to salvage yards in Chicago and sell houses, housing material from South Bend at a huge markup price. They're not going to take it to salvage yards and tell them to do, they're not going to take it to salvage yards in Indiana and sell it, because there's a lot of things in these houses that are worth, things like the wood, the fireplaces, the windows, the grass, there's so many things besides the copper pipe, you know? When I worked in houses in Detroit, the first thing you see, and there are so many walls because they ripped out the pipes, you know? Uh, but my point is, is that there needs to be a plan, and you have something special in South Bend, you, you have a very user-friendly city. There's not a long commute to work, doesn't take me two hours to get to work, I don't have to sit in a car. It's amazing. It's family-friendly, there's so many activities families can do here. Please think about these things and making it a bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, green city, because that is the future of our country. If you look at L.A. and you look at New York, these people are getting priced out, the young urban professionals, and they're going to want, starting families, they're going to want to be working at the Grand Rapids.
Did you speak to the ordinance?
Oh, the, who's the ordinance?
The ordinance, the bill.
Oh, yes, but that's what I'm saying, is I'm supporting it because of that. Here we go. Have a nice night, Karen.
My name is Ray Hernandez, I live at seven oh two East South Street. Um, Mike and I have lived there, as she says, for over forty years. I am in support of the bill as part of an overall plan to ensure that the process for correcting the vacant and abandoned housing problem is addressed in a judicious, maybe not expeditious, maybe not as expeditious as some people rock it, something judicious. But my estimation at this point, judicious becomes far more important than expeditious. I think it is possible to move too fast on this. I do think that a thousand houses in a thousand days is a worthy goal, but if you, uh, if you listen closely, now, I, I look around and I don't see much more anymore, but I believe that most of us were sitting in this room, when just, uh, tonight, you said that out of the first fifty, out of the first fifty houses marked for demolition, four have already been upgraded to rehab? Out of the first fifty, out of a thousand. Now, let's say that you break the remaining houses down into units of one hundred, okay? So out of the next hundred, you will probably find an even higher percentage of salvageable homes, and out of the next hundred, you're going to find a, a, you know, another increase in that percentage. And by the time you hit to those last hundred, you're probably not going to find very many that really need demolition. You will probably find a very high percentage of rehabable housing. Now, I have looked at the vacant housing report, and I think I have a fairly decent comprehension of it. And, you know, I've heard about the land banks and, uh, all, uh, the bucket strength, and, you know, all this kind of thing. And I've also heard Mayor Pete, personally, heard Mayor Pete say, "We cannot demolish our way out of this." Okay? So again, the analysis needs to be a rehab, and, and the, the process has to be judicious, even at the expense of expeditious, and I support this plan as part of that judicious approach in getting maximum rehab, which will respect the integrity of neighborhoods, which will be fair and just to the residents that we have lived in those neighborhoods, and which will result in quality, affordable housing, getting back on the tax rolls, and keeping this city on the, on a solid economic foundation. I think this is part of keeping the city on a, on a solid economic foundation. That's why I support this plan. Thank you.
My name is Dave Stickel, I live at thirteen oh eight, Michelle Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. Like I add another thought to this, uh, I've looked into it quite a bit, and I found one element that wasn't really addressed. They're worried about tearing it down, they're worried about contamination, worried about rebuilding. I'm going to add something that hasn't been done, as far as I can find, since two thousand nine, homes for veterans, shelter for veterans. With the rehab of these, I believe we could, uh, house for veterans, disabled or otherwise. We've got the veteran clinic here, not a hospital, but we do have a lot of veterans that are homeless or struggling, and their families. And, uh, I, I've started a little conversation, which I know takes some time, this is why I'm in support of the bill, uh, holding this up a little bit, so we can get some conversation a little deeper. I spoke to the veterans administration and HUD, and they are not talking. I've also talked to some of the local churches and nonprofits. Their interest is that they're not sure exactly where this stands right now, so they're not sure whether to really get deeply into conversation, but they are interested to a point. And I believe with a little bit of time, we can develop a little better plan, maybe benefit some of the veterans, things around here, not just the veterans, but that was one element that I have not heard brought up at all. That would be the end plan, once these homes are done, or closer, even for the veterans that can help. I think the government has a lot of funding, a lot of availability, and access in that direction, maybe we haven't looked at. So, for those reasons, among others, I'm in support of delaying this demolition for a little while, keep the conversation going and getting deeper, and, uh, maybe get some of these people in that work together a little more. Thank you.
If you want, uh, if you speak in court in the bill, if you come to the podium now?
Hi, my name is Regina Williams-Pestner, I live at eight three eight North Ellis Street in South Bend. I speak tonight on behalf of residents, who've been coming together over the course of the last few months, uh, even over fifty, who came out in a snowstorm earlier this year to discuss our concerns and about and ideas for addressing issues of the vacant and abandoned homes in our neighborhoods. The one thousand homes in a thousand days benchmark has been a great concern, particularly with issues of asbestos and lead hazards. So we want to thank you first, you the council and the agents of the mayor's office for working together to make sure that going forward, our city will ensure the safety of residents through compliance with state and federal regulations around inspection and abatement. Still, the commitment to address a thousand houses in a thousand days has been a concern because there are many questions and few answers about how the city plans to address the homes, other than with dollars earmarked for demolition. But we have heard the mayor say, "Time to come again," that he welcomes the input of residents, and he's looking to partner with community organizations and neighborhood associations to enact a plan that includes everyone's ideas. So we also recognize a thousand houses in a thousand days as an opportunity. There's many ideas being discussed in these meetings with residents, not the least of which include recent information brought to our community about solutions that cities across the country have found to secure homes to a higher standard, to eliminate the problems that, uh, Mike Schmoe even talked about earlier, infestation, arson, violent crime, and blight that come along with the vacant and abandoned homes. And I've been asked to share tonight just a few of the ideas that we've been talking about over these last few months. Uh, we've heard some statistics from across the country tonight, um, but residents are interested in learning more about the issues with a local analysis of the cost of demolition, versus the cost of improving homes and/or securing homes to a higher standard. It's been said that the cost of demo for a home is around six thousand dollars, um, and that's likely to increase out here tonight with some of the abatement procedures we're putting in place. Um, so the questions we, uh, that came up are, uh, what are some alternatives to demolition? What are some ways the city might be able to spend that money to improve neighborhoods? Uh, many people who live in those reinvestment areas targeted for demolition have expressed a need for assistance in repair of their own already occupied homes. Many make too much money to qualify, they've gone down and tried to apply for grants and the loans from the city, but they make too much money to, to actually qualify for those grants, but yet they don't make enough to really move forward in a, a timely manner on actually making the improvements on their own homes. So that's one big area of concern. And this is one way to begin working on prevention, so once we look down the road at how can we continue to improve our neighborhoods and reduce the number of homes that become vacant in the first place. There's also been some information shared about the cost of securing homes required as we currently do. In two thousand and eleven, it was said the city spent a hundred and seven thousand dollars on the materials of the home just on buying plywood to secure vacant homes, that we can imagine, we know plywood doesn't really work, you're constantly going back out after it's been broken into again and again. So we, we know that that's not effective, not to mention the issues that, again, fire, crime, and infestation, what kind of money has been spent to, uh, deal with all of those issues. So, um, one, one thing that's come up is, what if we train city workers, or local residents, to install truly secure systems, creating jobs while improving safety? Also, maybe another idea is, what if we use some money to provide incentives for rehab? Maybe the city would secure the homes for a year, and those who are rehabbing the property would have benchmarks that they have to complete in a timely fashion. So those are just some of the ideas that's come out, and the point of presenting these ideas is not, is just to demonstrate there are many people who live in the neighborhoods that are really being affected, like my house is right next door to like three houses that are, one's on the first fifty, and others I'm sure are following along, but there's a lot of people with great ideas, a lot of energy and resources in, in finding solutions. So there's no expectation that by presenting these ideas, it's going to be the solution, and everybody's going to say, "Yeah, let's do that," and all that. But the point is that we're here, we want to participate, and, um, we'd like to have that time to have the council, the mayor, and everyone involved, just be able to engage with residents to find solutions that work for everyone, and most particularly, so that those who are in the areas that are affected by the vacant and abandoned homes have opportunity that they feel included in the process. So we believe, speaking to the bill, that we, the neighbors, uh, we need to know what vacant homes, what, which homes are vacant and abandoned first, so we know what homes we're talking about. And we also need to take steps to secure the home, to prevent further deterioration and improve safety. And we want to engage local residents and, and local contractors to improve the properties, because this will increase the personal investment in keeping the community nice. And then, of course, and this might be speaking to the other bill, so I apologize, and I'm done in two seconds, two seconds, take some time, even if it is just fifty days, to think creatively about how we can invest in our community, and we can come up with some ways that we can create jobs, improve safety, and beautify our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you have one more that's coming up? Okay, would you please come right behind me, please? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Tiffy Brown, and I live at three thirty, West Colback. Um, I've been up here several times before, and I know that you're asking for people to speak directly on the bill, so I'm going to, exactly. I'm going to speak on the four amendments. This week alone, we went and looked for, um, who owns certain properties that are on the demolition list. We went to code enforcement, we went to the sheriff's office, we went to, um, records. We got a name, but no way of contacting the individual. When we looked for the deed and records, we got a bank that they still own a loan, owe a loan through. So still, no way to contact the individual who owns the home to see if they would even be interested in selling the home or anything else. But the home is sitting there, empty, vacant, windows busted out, plywood up against the windows. It's not bringing the city any money, it's hazardous to us as a community, but we have no way of doing anything, and even when we spoke to code enforcement, once you tear those homes down, which are not the city's, it still leaves us with a property, an empty lot that still belongs to someone else. So my question was, even to the city, what do we do with that property? Who gives us the right to tear it down if we can't, if us as residents can't even purchase those homes? So in support of even having, looking at the pictures up there, there was nothing on these homes that said anything about them besides boards, and nobody was living there. So I support the bill, and in total, and I'm asking that you all do the same. You go home, you don't have to look at these homes beside you. You don't have a four-year-old child running around trying to play, but not knowing what's around him. So it's hazardous to me, it's hazardous to my son, so I ask that you support it as well. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Paige Slaughter. I reside at 330 West Colfax. I am here representing women in need of work, and once again, as Kizzy mentioned, we're here to support Hillary's bill. I'm a certified renovator, I'm gonna keep putting that out there because with all of the projects that are going on in South Bend, I find it really, really strange that I don't have a job. I'm a project lead supervisor. I go from pillow to pillow to figure out why I can't get a job. I'm supporting this bill because I see that there's great opportunity here in South Bend, and I'm wondering why everybody is asleep and nobody's doing anything. I'm really, really disappointed in the city of South Bend. Each time I go to the YWCA, each time I go to the Hope Rescue Mission, or each time I go wherever, I go to ask those questions of, "How do you feel that if you became an ironworker?" And these are primarily women that I surveyed, or Kizzy and I surveyed. Everybody's saying the same thing, "We want jobs." If we could take 100 houses and put them back together again instead of, you know, just a laptop of them, "Okay, it's done." You don't want your life to be just cut off like that. So we're asking the same thing, that we be given the opportunity to build, to rebuild, to renovate, to restore. And to restore our faith as well, because right now, my faith is shattered, and that's my name. I can't even get a job because of my potential, because of my current budget. I have the qualifications. And so when the outside contractors come in, and, you know, "Yeah, we're gonna give you a job," I'm still waiting. So I'm trying to figure out where are the answers? What do I do to survive in the city of South Bend, even though I'm a native of Chicago? So all I'm asking is that you all do support the bill, because I always ask you all to do this. Put yourself in my shoes. Walk in my shoes. And if you all have any kind of heart, any consideration, you will consider this, look at me on day, down the line, but don't affect somebody's family up there. It might not be right now, but right now, I'm gonna go family members where I'm coming. I'm about to be homeless, I'm sure that doesn't matter to anybody here. But I'm fighting for the right thing, and I'm fighting to become a lawyer. I'm a certified renovator, I'm a project lead supervisor, I'm a lead active worker, no job.
Thirty seconds, Ben.
Support the bill.
At this time, we're moving to those who are in opposition to the bill. Those who do not support the bill, we ask you to come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, we'll now move to the council portion, council members, starting with First District Councilmember Tim Scott, and I'll go directly down the line.
I was on the vacant abandoned task force, and one thing, Mayor Pete wrote about 1,000 days and 1,000 houses in a thousand days, I want to be sure it's clear, and Mike Schmo actually spoke on this at a committee meeting. It isn't 1,000 homes getting torn down, it's 1,000 homes having a disposition put on it. That's either rehab or tear it down. One thing that was quite mentioned in the talk meetings during the vacant abandoned task force, the four public meetings that we had, numerous conversations, we have counseled, the report that the council members got prior to the release of the report, is there is a rehab side to this. And I do agree, MBE, DDE, many local skilled workers need to have a place at that. But when I look at the accountability ordinance that they were forming us, I have some very major concerns with it. And going down the amendments, the demo notice, shavier zoning and notice process. We publicly state what houses are getting torn down, what demo, where the demo is. We're posting outside Code, they're in the newspaper. We, as a council, have pushed Code very hard to send us the list, and this is the June 6 list. And it has every house that's gone before Code on that June 6 list. And there's two out here for demo, 1115 Cedar and 518 South 32nd Street. I actually send out to my constituents in the First District, "If you have a house on that area, please be involved, please come and see and look at it." Please speak, one word at a time. There's still plenty of houses that are out there on a tax sale for people to take opportunity, when they do have the dollars and the resources, to take advantage of some very cheap homes that are out there that should be rehabbed. Not everything's getting torn down, there are things that should be rehabbed and will be rehabbed. You can go to Code, you can get a list of everything on a house on a certain address. And I know Code, their houses, or Code has worked with for over 10 years with the homeowners, trying to get them to do what they need to do. So I'm sorry, I look at the metal box that we put on the windows, and I see a whole nother target for people to go and scrap that out. I've seen neighborhoods and houses where they've come in and they've torn out 240-volt wired air conditioners to take them, and 480-volt commercial units that they've taken. So I see this as a whole nother target to it. I just have major concerns. Honestly, I can't support the accountability clause in this just because it's gonna add so much red tape. Three estimates for a house that may or may not be rehabbed, or who knows when it'll be rehabbed. I think that's a lot of money upfront, that's a lot of manpower put into something that might happen down the road, and that's all I'll say.
Henry, I got the risk of repeating myself, because I've said probably more than 100 times now, I want to make sure that our government is transparent, inclusive, and accountable in all that we do. And so the original bill that you presented to us, I am in full support of. I agree that quarterly administrative reports are something that we, the council, should be receiving. We should, we haven't ever received these reports, and so I agree that that would help go a long way towards promoting transparency and accountability. The other items that you presented to us, fiscal impact, future use summary statement, and the demolition prioritization form, I'm in full support of that. That too will support transparency, accountability, and to steal from what Mr. Hernandez said, that, you know, this should be, we should focus more on transparency than expediency. The intent of Bill 1413, I think, is something that I'm in full support of, with transparency and accountability. What I can't support, though, is the paragraph E with the amendments that were added today. And so what I am going to say is that I will support Bill 1413, but I will need to make a motion to remove paragraph E from the bill before I can be in support of this bill.
Henry, I like the work you've done with Bill 1413, but I think you need a different model. And I think the crucial question you have to ask on this particular problem is, where do you get the money? Who pays for this? That's the problem, because I don't know of any contractor that has put $30,000, $40,000 into rehabbing a house that's only gonna end up selling $20,000. I don't think there's anybody in this audience here that... No, then, we need people like him, that's great, so you sign up tonight, because I think that's great. And I think the other, I don't think that there's anybody that would take part of their paycheck tonight and rehab a house for $30,000, $40,000 and turn around and when it's only worth 20. So I think the problem is the money, where it comes from. And I think that all the notions are well and good, but I think you have to get the money. I noticed you noticed, excuse me, you cited Evanston, Illinois, Albany, New York, and they all came with federal dollars. And I think that's the key, for this program to work, you gotta get federal or state dollars. Because I don't think we have local dollars to do it. I think our priorities of the citizens seem to be crime, where money should go, schools. So I think if you can get some grants from the federal government, and even get some banks to support you locally, if you have a different model, the goal is noble. But the essential question is, where do you get the money? That's the key. And who's gonna support the money out, so?
When Mr. Davis first presented the idea of a 60-day moratorium, because there might be some other ideas out there, I'm really supportive of that. And there still may be some ideas, I think we heard some of them tonight. One of the things we might accomplish in 60 days is whether or not you can find, or someone can find, some of those federal dollars, or state dollars, or HUD dollars, which I quickly looked at Fall Creek's development, and they had a $4 million federal grant for that, which was one of the ones cited in the study. But even with the best of intentions, and however well intentioned everything is, if the city acquires something, if it's rehab, by the time it's rented or sold and then maintained, there's a funding requirement. And what we have tonight is an idea which would potentially save a lot of houses, I'm all in favor of that. But absent the resources behind it, that just leaves some more frustration. I think we're just a little bit ahead of the curve. And finally, one note that Mayor Pete made, I think it was in the State and City Address. He said, "The fact we do have to realize at some point in time that the housing stock we have was for a city of 130,000, and we're now 101,000." There are too many homes, they may be salvageable, they may be nice, they may be in a great location, but there simply aren't even the resources to put someone in them, or the resources to rehab them, and let them set until someone comes along. So the idea of the moratorium, that this is amended in such a fashion, I'm 100% in favor of that. Hopefully, some of this can be resolved. The request, I think the notice request is a nice idea, but I think it's burdensome. So if this is so amended, and we're back to where we were when this was first amended, I'm willing to support it. As it is, I just can't go forward with this and give people a lot of false hopes. That's the fact of what you have to...
I would like to say that in order to, now, Councilwoman Shays said she needs an amendment to that's E?
I would be removing the amendments and returning it to its original format.
So just getting rid of all the amendments from that one?
Bringing it back to the original bill.
And Councilman, you...
Now, that approach was in my mind.
That approach is fine.
Where's the original?
I think that approach, that probably go along with all the accountability issue, because that goes along with what we've been talking about, the orange tape concept. And I could join my other colleagues who have shared that if there's some moments to be some adjustment of some of these amendments. So if we have that discussion, let's keep it in.
I would just say, regardless of the outcome of the vote tonight, you know, I thought there was a lot of good work put into the presentation, I think there are a lot of good, worthy goals in terms of employment, bettering housing. You know, I would say, again, regardless of how we turn out, secure state funds, federal funds, and potentially start a program that would, you know, employ out-of-work WMB or WBME employees to rehab houses, and I think that's all, very worthy goal, so I would say, in the other half, regardless of the state of the situation.
I would just want to say, first, thank you from your office for the work that you've done and clearly, I think there are a lot of, there are nine issues within this bill, the first of which, based on what we've heard, we really do have a 60-day moratorium in regards to the houses that were identified to be demolished. We have to start the process over, which means that you do have time for that conversation, that engagement to begin. I think it is critical that as we begin to look at employment and training opportunities, that those be clearly defined, and how that those individuals who are certified, and those individuals who are not, and community diversity, that's what we need. MBEs, WBMs, that's the right vehicle by which we can encourage and make sure that the planning field is not even possible. But 60 days, and what I just heard from the chief of staff, is really where we have this particular time. So there are a lot of areas within the bill that have been added. When you look at the original space and the original bill in terms of communication and transparency, you know, to me, that's a solid bill, and those other areas can and should be addressed. And I think we can address those through the diversity board and through the diversity office in the city as well. But we really, from what I've heard, we do have a moratorium, because we can't report.
Okay, am I allowed to respond to questions that were asked?
I want to make sure everyone has opportunity, this is the council portion. And at this time, I want to make sure, the presenter would like to add, I want to make sure that's...
Okay, great, and thank you so much again for participating in this conversation, and I saw that it needed. Money for upfront rehab, there's a $60,000 for a house budget for demolition. If you reverse those dollars and couple it with, well, I put in the presentation, obviously, some federal grants, but as well as state banks-funded programs, you would have that money. I think that the three requirements as far as, three estimates on homes, that's the reason why we're asking for that, because who obviously gets something, puts $40,000, $50,000 in a home that's worth $5,000? Who would do that? That's not a smart guy. However, who says from the city that the house needs $50,000 of all the work? So that's where that came from. And so I just come in through the neighborhood, and it's stating, "The house needs to be torn down, the house needs to be torn down," and they have not ever done any sort of renovation or inspections on their own? I mean, where's the truth in that? There's no truth in that. And rehab increases property value. It increases property value, it stands on its own. This bill itself, Mr. Scott, you keep going back to what you already do. You should retire, guy, you work another full-time job as well. And if you're making all those phone calls, and going through all those different departments, and reading all those emails, I suspect you probably sleep three hours a night, and I've been there before. With this right here, before you, this one-page report, this will allow you to probably sleep another six hours out of the night. You probably should report eight. If you pay attention to this bill, and fiscal impact summary statement, it's clear and clear on why what's going on, why it's happening, without you, me, or anyone else going to this place, that place, and every other place to get the information. It's a directory, it helps you out, it enhances your job, sir. I'm trying to help you out, trying to help us all out. The 60-day state moratorium, we had no recollection or understanding about that. Councilmember Davis is gracious enough to bring that up to my ass meeting. Obviously, this has been out here for the better part of, almost a month or a month and a half. So obviously, they obviously inspected, and so we were at the crossroads. But this was out there well before we'd been doing anything about what was going with the space. Which is very bad thing. And the problems of the dollars, we've gone on that, that's our job. We're the keeper, the sheriff, the state keeper of the city trust, that's what we do. So for us, if people are saying that someone else, or somebody else, or something else is going to designate or dedicate these dollars, that's what we do to our budget process. That's our job. So I don't understand where you need to come from. Don't let the vessel define what you have with the city. Take me out of it, this is about the byline's community. So we'll probably be moving out here sometime soon. I don't know, maybe you probably may retire, I don't know, but I'll still be here. I don't want to be here. And so don't let it, perfect, then you end me a good. There's nothing wrong with this, if it doesn't work, guess what? It just doesn't work. If it works, guess what? Good job. And all of you will get prepared for that. You will. So I think I've answered all the questions, I think I did a good job writing them down. If there are any more questions, you know I have no problem answering them. If there are any more questions, you know, I have no problem answering them, but let's see what's just following the main. Let's roll.
Counselor Linda Shay?
I'd like to make a motion to remove paragraph E from the substitute bill.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions or concerns? All votes in favor of the motion as been made. Might hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed? Roll call. Counselor Scott?
Okay, this is to remove section E. Mr. Scott? Mr. Henry Davis?
Nay.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Barton?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Linda White?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
And President Davis?
Aye.
Uh, section E is removed by a vote of eight to one.
Now we need to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept Bill fourteen, substitute bill fourteen?
You would either be recommended favorably or unfavorably to the full council, and it's your back to the original bill.
And how do, what, what's the exact verbiage?
Um, if it's favorable, you would be recommended though fourteen thirteen favorable to the full.
I am recommending the fourteen thirteen, as I have just amended.
Yes, you're back to the original bill.
It's fourteen thirteen to ten. The amendment is being put in place.
Fourteen thirteen to the full council. Recommend being so. Okay.
It's been moved to second. All votes in favor of the motion. Might hear your vote? Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, I need a vote.
Okay. Uh, this is to recommend fourteen thirteen and its original version to full council. Favor. Uh, Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Nay.
Dr. Barton?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Linda White?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Scott?
Nay.
And President Davis? Aye. Four, four, four days and five, five. To make a motion to continue eighteen thirteen to May twenty-nine.
Now, I'm just going to call you to the table. Second.
It's moved to second. All votes in favor of the motion. Might hear your vote? Aye. Those opposed? All here. Might commission rise of the majority. It's moved to second. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All here.
Full council now session four, third reading of fourteen thirteen. First reading on that, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter six, article eight of South Bend municipal code by the addition of new section six dash thirty-seven point two, addressing accountability of government actions on buildings declared vacant or abandoned. Do we need to make a motion or no? Okay, all right.
Are we voting? Oh. I make a motion to accept Bill fourteen thirteen. To pass Bill fourteen thirteen.
Second. Third, forty. Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
And Dr. Furley?
Nay.
And Dr. Barton?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Linda White?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Nay.
Mr. Scott?
Nay.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
And President Davis?
Nay.
Uh, the bill passes by a vote of five. Thank you. Resolution thirteen eighteen, please. The resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for a temporary moratorium on demolition of buildings which are not a health and public safety hazard. Committee report.
Yes, um, Mr. President, um, Mr. President, really for the record, I just need to say something. And, um, the community of the other, uh, area, uh, I don't consider that, um, I was reported on behalf of the public works and property vacation. I was at the time reporting the community relations of residential neighborhood. At this time, um, I'm also reporting on, from the community relations and residential neighborhood, driving Bill thirteen eighteen, and that comes with no recommendation.
Thank you. This is a moratorium. Presenter?
Thank you. Um, as stated before, there's more time planned before you, uh, as a way of trying to figure out more of a comprehensive approach, uh, through council action. The thought was, and is still is on the table, to create an ad hoc committee for this state period, in order to incite more community conversation from folks, obviously, from the community, but also within the council ranks. Uh, the idea is also to locate funding for projects, uh, look at other cities and things that they have done that have proven to be successful, uh, and also to give ourselves more of an understanding of what the vacant abandoned task force has and has not done. We're just looking for more transparency. I'm looking for more transparency as it relates to sixty days. And at the end of the sixty-day period, hopefully, we have collectively come together, came together, administration as well as council, as well as ad hoc committee, to perform the duties that are entrusted by, by the citizens of the city of South Bend. Uh, the other, the last part of, uh, of this particular, uh, moratorium, it's not sixty days that's going to stall us out for sixty days. Obviously, there's one that's looks like it's already out there. I'm not certain on that still. But what I do know is that if this problem has been looming for the last twenty years, what's fifty more days? It doesn't change anything. Maybe a couple more houses down, potentially, or maybe a couple more houses down being renovated. I don't know. But I'm willing to go down this track and make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do as city keepers and being oversight, uh, the overseers of this particular city of South Bend as a group.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis.
You're welcome.
Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in opposition? Bring it back to the council for, uh?
President?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to share with the council that, um, as the chairperson of the community relations that has worked along, um, Counselor Tim Scott as the chair of the residential neighborhood, um, I didn't see no problem with us continuing having regular updates, um, in our committees regarding the same issue. And over the next month and times, we can continue to have Mr. Davis and Counselor Davis and others to monitor along with different issues as they come up with the vacant abandoned housing, and they can continue to come up with this kind of thing. But really, when you look at the, um, the best of issues and everything else that's going out here, um, nothing moving for our residents to do that. So, I recommend that we can still have all that done, because then I, I'd be willing to continue to chair those committees, and if I can't do it, hopefully, Mr. Scott can do it, and we can continue to monitor this whole process and keep on going, because we still got our orange tape up here.
Well, you can take your stance, Counselor Davis, uh, if this is actually going through. You will take this opportunity and also a chance to say that we agree with the state, and we want to make sure that we are doing our judiciary responsibilities as well as our oversight responsibilities. So, if you do follow through with it, you would be aligned with the state has going on, whether it's health-related, or some other issues that may be out there. But taking a side of the state may be a good thing, in this case.
All right, do we have a recommendation?
I, I'm going to make a statement. Um, Henry, I think, um, thirteen eighteen is redundant in light of the passage of fourteen thirteen. I think, um, with fourteen thirteen, we'll get the transparency and accountability that, um, I know that you were encouraging. Uh, so I will not be supporting Bill thirteen eighteen, um, both for the fact that fourteen thirteen will accomplish a great deal, um, and in light of the item issues and the asbestos issues that we discussed earlier, I feel as if we are essentially in a moratorium, um, or the, the project, project has been delayed, um, so I will not be supporting thirteen eighteen.
So is that a recommendation?
President Davis, and I can make a recommendation that we continue fourteen eighteen indefinitely.
I'm not, I can't, not this second.
First of all, we have seven from any other amendments? Well, you're not going to keep my bill just for the president's sake, so I'm making a motion that we continue this indefinitely, thirteen eighteen.
Second.
Okay. First, we have a motion to continue this.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. There was a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Well, that doesn't, it doesn't matter. Continuing it. We're still going to support the abandoned.
Did you have a vote? Or did you get that vote? It sounded like it would have been seven-two to continue. Okay, let's do a roll.
But can I add a clarification, Counselor Attorney? What, continuing indefinitely so that the vacant abandoned task force go ahead, move forward within a day or ninety days or whatever? Okay, so that, so it's in an opus quo. It doesn't matter. Okay.
Fairly enough. Furley, you get to go first.
Uh, hey. I mean, it's, it doesn't matter, votes. It's a.
Now, Dr. Barton?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Linda White?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Nay.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Henry, yes?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
And President Davis?
Nay.
Uh, seven-two. Yes, first reading of nineteen thirteen. First reading on the bill to locate the following dispossessed property, the first east west alley south of Indiana Avenue from St. Joseph Street, east approximately two hundred feet in the north-south alley, and a lived fourteen piece. There's a motion here to send a department works and property vacation for five twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Twenty thirteen.
Uh, make a motion to move that to the area plan.
No, no, no. I'll read it.
Yeah. First reading on the bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at fifty-six sixty-one F.J. Nims Parkway, and the vacant property east of and adjacent to, and west of and adjacent to fifty-six sixty-one F.J. Nims Parkway, Councilmatic District One in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Remove that bill twenty dash thirteen, set to area plan.
Second. The motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Third, forty. Let's go to twenty-one thirteen. First reading on the bill, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for approximately eighty-five acres located at a southwest corner of Sample Street and Prairie Avenue, Councilmatic District Six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Remove that twenty-one dash thirteen, set to area plan. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Excuse me, please, we're still doing business here. If everybody can keep down. Thank you. Let's go to twenty-two thirteen. First reading on the bill, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter five, article three, section five dash fifteen A and D of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new article ten, entitled Honeybee Keeping Regulations and Amending Section Two Dash One Twenty-three Schedule of Ordinants and Code Violations.
Quick motion to send to help in public safety for five twenty-nine.
Okay, we're motioning second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Let's go to twenty-three thirteen, please. First reading on the bill, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating the toll, the toll sum of thirty thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars within the city general fund, number one oh one, for a new employee position and professional association dues and amending sections two dash one twenty-three Schedule of Ordinants and Code Violations. Make a motion to hear the substitute bill. Motion, I need somebody to second it. Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Now, motion on the substitute version of twenty-three thirteen.
Make a motion to send substitute bill twenty-three thirteen to the personal and finance committee on May twenty-ninth.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Twenty-four thirteen. First reading on the bill, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the maximum salary and wages of certain non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend, Indiana for calendar year twenty thirteen.
Make a motion to send Bill twenty-four thirteen to the personal and finance committee on May twenty-ninth.
Second. We have motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. And you have to finish business before the council this time.
Yes, sir. Uh, President Davis, part committee, uh, met last week about the Zoological Society proposal to go public and private partnership. At that time, we had a very, very detailed, aggressive conversation, both sides, both sides, the argument was presented, and I think that everyone left the meeting satisfied with the information that was out there. At this current time, this juncture, uh, there is still some conversation that is left to be had as it relates to the city employee, and the life line of the city employee as it relates to bargaining rights, uh, for those, I think it's fifteen employees, or maybe off of that, approximately fifteen employees. So, at this current time, uh, I'm looking to, uh, have another conversation, probably another committee hearing, in order to get defensive language, uh, hardcore evidence of how this could potentially happen for the city of South Bend, but not on the backs of its employees. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was clear. I think that there was good media coverage on it, et cetera, however, we may admit some of this. But as the chairman of part committee, and as is a minority that's out there, that we need to investigate a little bit more, I, I think there's obviously enough time for another conversation. Uh, I want to reiterate, uh, and I've done this several times, that the city of South Bend common council does not have, uh, perhaps a dog in this fight. However, we, uh, well, maybe a bear, or, or a monkey in this fight, but, uh, a zoo. You're supposed to laugh. But we don't, but at the end of the day, the state law doesn't allow us to. It goes to the park board, or via a function of the mayor's office. So if we, or if I, or someone wants to bring forth a resolution, um, understand it's for a support of. It won't change, or it may change, it may add pressure, but it does not, uh, define a new agreement per the management contract of this, uh, the South Bend Zoo, Palabon Zoo, and Zoological Society.
Right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman President, um, just one more. So again, for the, um, full council, um, thank the administration so far, as the reports that the public works director gave this afternoon regarding a more permanent plan for those neighbors who live near the new energy, um, for the new energy site, with the wells hopefully being in place, the timetable that he gave us, um, by October of this year two thousand thirteen, and, um, hopefully, that will be a key, um, tool to lower the water problem, or the, it speaks to water problem that has been in the basins in the area there. And so, um, he gave us a schedule that we all can hopefully keep to, and then those dollars are coming up for the July date that we can look at. Um, I would also, in terms of administration, I think there was a, um, court in, uh, at the front, but to look at the concept of, um, check funds with that issue too, and we'll have that conversation too, um, because that's also the, plus the tip areas, so that's something that's correct. Um, so looking at that is a key thing for us. The voting centers, voting meetings, uh, we've been dealing with that, there we have letters, um, that were sent on this, behalf of this council. Um, you all have chimed in on emails to the, um, to, I afforded your concerns to, uh, Saudi clerk, um, Terry, um, Recklet. And if you have any other concerns and issues, please email them to me. There's a meeting coming up on this Wednesday at five thirty, here in this, um, same room. And, um, the more we can have people to share their thoughts and concerns about the voting centers, where they should be located, um, how many machines should be in them, should we have an amount of all, should we not have, all the whole discussion, everything that you have any concerns of, um, continue to review your districts, other issues, and make sure that we have, um, people's voices that are heard regarding, um, the voting centers. And, um, the last thing that I dare, um, look forward to, um, meetings with, um, hearing from the administration regarding their proposal and plan when it comes to AJ Wright and, um, Bosch plant, um, their recommendations to us, how to utilize those dollars that come from, um, companies when they have been penalized, and, uh, hopefully have that report by the end of the year. I'm done.
Sure, that's all you've got?
That's all I got.
Alright, any new business before this council?
Yes, sir, President Dieter, if you have any, because I have a news pass, uh, like, I, uh, you have seen, and I think I sent it out to Mary Beth, I, I don't know, um, I didn't get it, so, you got it? You able to get it? Okay, great. Um, what's happening now is that I'm working with another local organization to tackle, uh, food deserts and also issues as it relates to mini mart, uh, stores. I don't know, uh, what I do know, uh, the conversation is going to continue to grow in the community, and as it grows, I will probably be asking the assistance of the chair for helping public safety to have a meeting about how, uh, licensee agreements and the structure of license agreements as it relates to, uh, uh, mini marts in our local areas can be changed. Uh, one thing that is being considered at this time is, um, not being able to sell certain items within a thousand feet of a school. As you realize, many of the mini marts are, are located in and around school areas, most of all of them are actually, and so when you have children now being exposed to folks buying single cigarettes, uh, buying drug paraphernalia, Viagra, um, and whatever else that could be potentially negative, have negative impact on that child, or even an adult that goes in there, versus being able to look at fresh clothes, fresh meats, and healthier lifestyles, I think that this city needs another look at how we are promoting health, not only through unity gardens and all of some other things that we do a few times out of the year, but on a continuous and regular basis. So if any of the council members want to participate, wants to help follow this particular matter, I, I, I'm opening the door for you right now, but, um, the conversation is happening with the community now, uh, there will be a community hearing about this at the, uh, May eighteenth, four P.M., at the Granger Community Church across the street from the Johnson and Kovalevsky, on the corner of, uh, Taylor and Western, we call it M.C. Three, uh, it's called the Rose Circle Community Center. So, you're more than welcome to come out, participate, uh, but we're going to move forward with this with the folks that we're working with now, and one of the organizations is called Minority Health Coalition, there are a couple of, uh, area churches as well that's working on this issue, so we're just trying to help clean up some of our neighborhoods, and also, uh, mark out a better path for, for our kids.
Okay, thank you. Put it to the floor, anyone who wants to speak to the council this time, if there is something specific, if you want a council member to follow up, you need to fill out a form. If you don't fill out that form, no one's going to follow it up, so if you just want to come up there and talk about something that we have not covered over the past two hours and eighteen minutes, you can do so. Need your name and address for the record, and Tim Scott, fine council member of the first district, we'll time you. I'll give you a thirty second exit.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Locks, ten two, of Proust, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I'm coming to the council tonight to bring forth the serious problem of nepotism and corruption that has plagued our city and the homeowners for several years. It's been ignored by two mayors and several of their administrators. Homeowners have been forced to let a contractor brought to them by city, uh, by city, uh, employees to perform services in their homes. Several citizens brought up issues about the way this program was being ran, and why they were treated so bad by some of the city officials involved in this program, which I'm talking about the sewer insurance program again. After talking to several of my customers and researching some documents through the city, I found that the contractor was not only billing the homeowners for work that was done on the property, but he was turning around and billing the city for the exact same mark, the exact same amount. I've enclosed eight such cases in here with copies of the bills to the homeowner that were eight, and also copies that were billed to the city and paid, and I'm sure if I found eight, there's many, many more. Uh, anyhow, the same company calls the city out and has city employees come out with a city camera, and camera lines on these particular jobs and also on excavating jobs. Then this guy comes around and bills the city a hundred and fifty dollars for camera and line. I've also attached bills for his excavation work and highlighted what he charges the city a hundred and fifty dollars on every bill for camera and line, when the city brings their equipment out and city employees to do that work. This is all considered ghost building, which is very illegal. This company has filed all of its paid for work with the city under an incorporated name which was dissolved in fact in two thousand and three. I've attached a copy of the Secretary of State's documentation on this business that shows his corporation was dissolved in two thousand and three and is still not eligible for a certificate. I've also attached his certificate of insurance, his bond, and his W nine with the city, which are all filled out to this company's incorporated name. Yet when they write checks from a treasurer to this company, they're not written out to this incorporated name for some reason.
Thirty seconds, sir.
This company also charges for two men for labor on several jobs. I've got hundreds and hundreds of jobs that I can show you where this company has one laborer on the job and five or six city employees on that job working, but yet he charges for two, that's ghost employment. All of this has been turned over to the FBI, and I've also attached a copy of the federal agent's card, so you can feel free to call him, but this is something the city needs to look into.
Time's up, sir.
And I want the council to investigate this, wants him to follow and take care of it.
Thank you, sir. There we go, Jesse.
Hi, I'm... I'm Laura Johnson, I live at two oh four South Thirty-third Street, and I was one of the ladies that this man charged four hundred and twenty-five dollars to, and also charged the city, uh, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and I'd like to know why.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shar King, and I reside at seven fifteen South Thirty-sixth Street. I also was another, I guess you would say, customer of this gentleman, I called and I spoke to Kevin and Mary several times, I have a rock in my line, they refused to dig it, they would not give me any of this gentleman's information, maps, whatever he is, they told me that he's not that type of plumber, he only works for the city, they refused to give me any phone number, so I could call him, he wished to call me, they would give me no price, no anything. I also have the copy of the bill where I paid two hundred dollars and they turn around and charge the city two hundred dollars. I don't understand why he's being paid twice, and he's like some big secret guy somehow, somewhere, and I think it needs to be looked into on why we're all paying him, and they don't want to dig anything out of us.
Alright, thank you.
From Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight, I stand before the council concerned, I live on Dynasty, we have a problem with these mopeds, these little scooters, whatever you want to call them, other day I got a call, fourteen-year-old boy stole a motorcycle, scooter, hit a five-year-old boy that's fighting for his life in Memorial Hospital. I think they need to be addressed to, I think it needs to be looked into, we talk about the right to ride the bike. Suddenly in my vehicle, you see the people biking South Bend, but you see a scooter come down in the bike lane, with the girl sitting on the handlebars, and two men on the bike. He's a fourteen, thirteen-year-old kid, I think this needs to be addressed, if you're going to give them the right to ride in the bike lane, the scooters don't need to be in. Thank you.
I'm Eric Southern Brown, and I'm speaking on behalf of the citizen man for a better government, of course you don't file in South, speaking South Bend, and, uh, I think the problem is, right now, we have citizens very concerned about some things that's going on in city government, but we don't have nobody to work against the citizens. I think the city did a great job, a great presentation, uh, customers have trained, they said they would give them some money, the city regarded some funds, uh, we won't answer this, that, simple as that, we're not going to stand for it, and we're going to go down and check all these contractors, they're free of, free of a friend, and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to, they're licensed properly, they did not tax dollars, and I commend Jesse and the people that have come forth to the council acting for help. I can't, uh, go no deeper than that, that we're going to work on this thing, so don't just sit there and think it's going to go away, and the fourteen floor, you gotta call them, because this is not going away, and, uh, I can't really speak on what I want to speak on, but next week when I come, I'll be ready for this too.
Hello again, how you doing? I'm here tonight to ask the city council's consideration to bring...
Did I name it again?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Katie Lee, sixteen oh five, Cleveland, Rhode Island, Indiana. I'm here tonight to ask the city council's consideration to bring a Trader Joe's grocery store to downtown South Bend. What is Trader Joe's? Trader Joe's is a specialty grocery store, while a typical grocery store may carry fifty thousand items, Trader Joe's stocks about four thousand items, eighty percent of which bears its own brand names. You may be thinking, well, that sounds like Whole Foods, well, the difference is, is that while TJ's offers specialty items, it also offers inexpensive, healthy grocery staples such as natural peanut butter for a dollar twenty-nine, I'm not talking about natural Jif, I'm talking where the oil separates and, you know, you're not worried about what chemicals in it, that kind, I'm talking about sea salt for a dollar ninety-nine, not the seven-dollar, twelve-dollar sea salt at Whole Foods. Most of the products that TJ's are offered green in addition to being inexpensive, it also carries allergy-free foods such as gluten-free breads at a low price. Okay, that's great, what can this store do for South Bend? Well, it can revive our South Bend. Place in a Trader Joe's in downtown South Bend would complement, not compete with local South Bend businesses, and in fact would play a large factor in young professionals choosing to purchase a home near downtown. Young professionals like myself would be more attracted to purchasing housing in Chatham Park if there was an expendable grocery store such as Trader Joe's. Lack of grocery stores in downtown play, do play a role in whether or not families work for the city. Why would I live in South Bend if I have to drive all the way to Whole Foods and Great Road to buy my gluten-free products and produce? And just to piggyback on traveling to Great Road, having a Trader Joe's in downtown South Bend would mean dollars would be spent in South Bend, that heavy foot traffic would be extended to support local businesses. Also, having a Trader Joe's downtown to meet families, residents in South Bend who walk or ride a bike to the store, this plays a huge role in the future of South Bend planning. There'll be people and families before the walk when possible, and having a Trader Joe's in downtown South Bend will lay the groundwork to support a pedestrian, green funding city. In addition to the economic, cultural factors, Trader Joe's is the right place to work. Trader Joe's pays above union wages, as of two-ten, full-time crew members, we're starting at forty thousand to sixty thousand per year, and so managers are earning in the low six figures. It contributes to the employees' standard of life plan, Trader Joe's also offers health insurance benefits to part-time employees and their dependents with the possibility of an unpaid increase, but also receive ten percent discount on items bought at the store. So now what? Trader Joe's responds to petition requests from city planners and residents of the city. So let's work together as a city to get a Trader Joe's, a grocery store that has health insurance. To downtown South Bend, so I can finally leave here, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak to the council?